They say these, these new boxes that we are ordering are coming with dual points for water or irrigation or both. That we will be able to instantaneously tran- uh trend, track, collect the data and trend for emergency alarms that will be integrated into our on-call protocols. So this is, uh, we will be adding a total of eight new boxes.
I'll be with approval if you'll tell me what SADA stands for.
Systems Command and Data Acquisition.
Say again, please?
Systems Command and Data Acquisition.
Now, you all knew that, I know.
Basically did.
Because you've asked before.
Okay.
It's technical, Bill.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and with that, I'd like to take a five minute summary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you look at the development reports, the known like insubstantial experiences, cause we're not looking at this. For all we have known, yes, and the agreement was when we did that house committee, it seems a lot more because they seem to spray just in sections when they come by, but the reports that own the company's factory areas, probably all around here and there, they spray it over there. And they're probably seeing it somewhere. So maybe there's something. Or something. They tend to spray more than they do on the shoreline of the homes that they're building. One fourteen related to South Point.
Um, I mean, we now understand what they're, they're, both. So they typically, you know, alternate, you know, like spraying by a boat, spraying by a bug. You know, so you'll see them go by the shoreline with a bug.
Yes, I've seen that.
You know, and that, and typically, I mean, our typical, your thought. And we all spray around. That's a long story.
I couldn't keep, I couldn't keep any in it. So I finally said, okay, jar's gone.
Yeah, they're, they're.
Well, they were piled with piled algae around the lake all the time. We either had to spray it out.
Their banks and their lakes. They just drop off ours. I don't know if it's sixty-one that they call for, but it's Danny actually told us that it was probably one of the best lakes.
But those points here, it's questionable. I mean, if they come in and try to maintain, you know, that natural wet side over there, that's, you know, that's actually usually, this is just what they've done to play less hours on their business. The way they're, their actual treatment now, you know, it's not sure why. Oh, okay. We've a lot more of a hassle for like a boat.
Yes.
And so we kind of balance that usually. So where we would then, you know, spend most of the time spraying the grass, you know, plants near, you know, grasses, you know, brush and stuff. We add any plants in there. But if I get just add extra water to that, you know, we try to, we like a kind of an abandoned there so that it, you know, it's been open. So it just helps the grass.
Well, that's, that was the other thing that was not, yeah, it is because he was the, they're the committee, you know, that they would be known on the residential side.
I know plants at all on the residential side.
Right, unless your D O comes in.
Oh, I see, yes. Now, to answer your question there, no. It meant, what we look at is not the D O, you know, we're not looking, we're going out and that doesn't have any plants that let smoke them off. I mean, now gateway instructed?
Well, actually, it has. When our committee know that they're being known on the residential side.
Really?
Unless, unless, yeah, you specify.
So does L know, do you talk to L about this?
I have, I have talked to him.
Because L would be the one typically, like Chris might know a little bit about, you know, what's going on, but L would be the one that'd say, you know, we don't want any plants on the shore. If you tell them, if you have that, if you have the D O, you know, we don't have to have plants. And us residents don't want it. Light night, whatever, they tell us. Should I answer your question? That way, yes. Any of the plant, because, but overall on the whole community, it depends on us put together, the toral zone maintenance for the whole community, keep them in line, not to let them get out of.
Right.
People not to let them get in the water. So we, we set up, we did design though, and we put implemented that to the whole state of the community. But we didn't put in there anything about, for instance, you know, what's the deal, is this, is that, okay, that wasn't really part of it. Cause again, you know, part of it is we want to make sure your shoreline is washed away. We can't totally your shoreline, so we'd like to leave them.
Well, we don't have that very problem per se that, like, there's just lots to check out. It's not that perfect slope.
Right, that's right.
They are slope, not lines, don't need to.
If that's the case, then it's, we, we will do what L is doing. We're not against doing it. But we will do it, we want it.
Well, I just don't know if they follow, and I'm gonna ask.
As far as L's concerned, she would go, you know, I got some plants in my yard, I think they're curbing out. But you, if you speak with her, through her each other, you can say, hey, I grabbed a, ready?
A standard, so we don't, you know.
Right, we put a, we put a, we put a, 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 a,[546.34]
It's not like golf, the least number of points is the highest.
Kind of like my golf game.
You gotta remember that.
It's kinda like how my golf game would be, highest wins.
And we have to be scoring realistically and honestly.
Is there a handicap?
I'm gonna stay out of the way of that play.
Let me have the one that came back in my drawer. Thank you.
Steven do the, since he's the rap style, I think he'll do the confirmation.
There he is. Thank you. Mr. Banks?
Yep, who was that?
I wanted to hear from Mr. Blum, he might have something more to add.
We gotta say something now and then to let the people knowing who's watching or listening.
There isn't any good watching.
You're on the phone.
Something's wrong with their equipment.
The meeting was going so well.
One could argue this is an improvement.
But the record shows it, I did not say that.
Obviously, the audience is very much awake.
That was Mr. Phil Meesey.
From the Peter Galloway.
We want it in the minute.
Stand up so you can be on TV.
Okay. Where's Mr. Banks? No, that's not Mr. Banks, that's his paper, I'm sorry.
Thanks for the clarification. Okay. Ready for the results?
Yes.
Okay. And what I'm gonna give you is the top three from highest number of points down. Burger received a total of four hundred and eighty-three points, McDermott.
Is that one, are they one?
They are one, yes. McDermott will be number two at four hundred and fifty-seven total points.
Four hundred and fifty-seven?
Fifty-seven, yeah. And then Keith will be the third ranked at four hundred and fifty-two.
Detective, correct me if I'm wrong, so the court called for you for the audit committee to make a recommendation to the board supervisor to rank the three proposals audited. Indicated with Burger Toomes number one, McCullogh number two.
Keith number three.
That's correct. And then we'd be, type of motion would be appropriate.
I'll make that motion. The audit committee recommended to the board that Burger Toomes is first, McDermott Davis is ranked second, and Keith McCullough is ranked third.
Okay, here's the motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm confused, I'm confused what we just did, that's why I voted no.
He added up the rankings.
Right.
And the rank, and the rank.
Points.
Points. From what we added up the individuals for totals, and the totals came out that Burger Toomes was ranked first. McDermott Davis was ranked two, and Keith McCullough was ranked three. And it was all we were voting on was the ranking.
Okay, we're not voting on who we're gonna choose?
No. This is a recommendation of the audit committee to the board supervisor.
You're still wearing your audit committee hat.
Okay, so, all right, that's.
That, the audit committee turns over the recommendation to the board, and then the board would then ultimately decide how to proceed. Based on that recommendation.
Madam Chairman, is it in order to make a motion that we adjourn the audit committee?
Yes, would be in order.
Mrs. Flaherty, I think she still has.
Your attorney says it was in order.
I think she still has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, that's what I didn't understand, I thought this was the board's, was gonna be the board's recommendation.
That's the action.
Okay.
The board's action.
Okay, so that wasn't, I felt wasn't explained enough.
The board, the board will act, after the audit committee adjourns, the board will, the audit committee's recommendation.
Okay.
All right, now that I understand, well, we voted on it.
Second, the motion to adjourn the audit committee.
Okay, the motion in a second, adjourn the audit committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, no, okay.
Do we take this up now?
Yes.
As the board?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to take the advice of the audit committee and proceed with the selection of Burger Toomes as the most responsive.
Highest, no, the highest ranked.
The highest ranked. Could change him every time. The highest ranked qualified for. Qualified for.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Can I work for you, Steven?
The only thing I would love to add is including the additional scope work.
Specifically, that's the only.
Just to make sure that's very clear.
That the contract, that the agreement does stipulate that they are agreed with those.
Additional scope.
Yes.
Additional scope.
And you meant that.
I meant that.
And you mentioned with your second, correct?
I even said it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
Four to one. Okay. So, that takes us through all of five, I believe, is that correct?
Yes.
Five A, B, and C. So, six A.
Can I make a question, a motion on this one? Can I table, can we table this item for a workshop? So, we can have a workshop on this, a separate workshop just on this item?
You can make that motion.
There's a lot of stuff that I wanna make sure everybody understands.
Well, that's why I figured a workshop.
But this is gonna take time to talk about.
Right.
I don't have a problem with that, just as long as I explain what's in this so that everybody understands what we've got here.
And that's why I thought it would be important to have a workshop where we'd have all the time just to focus on this.
But the question is, when are we going to do it?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Flaherty, is that, is there a time that you wish to have this tabled until, so we have time certain?
Well, that's what I was gonna make a motion to table that maybe until.
Well, as Chris might know, the next available time.
Okay.
For a workshop.
Well, I was thinking a separate workshop, because I don't think this is just gonna take a half hour.
We can allow an hour.
We can allow it an hour.
It's gonna take at least an hour to do this.
Well, I was, I was thinking more like two or three hours, 'cause I'm sure there'll be a lot of conversation. So, we wanna start.
We approve the majority of it, it's already been approved.
I think we can, what do we have on our, as our next workshop?
We don't have anything set.
For November? Why don't we do this and set it for an hour and just really.
Second meeting in November?
Yeah, and lighten the agenda to be, you know, so we don't have another three hours behind the workshop.
Thank you.
Is that okay with everybody?
So, that would be the motion by Mrs. Flaherty is to table item six A, agenda to a workshop at November first, two thousand and eighteen.
Then first, the November workshop meeting, which would be the second November meeting.
Eighteenth.
Yeah, November eighteenth, I believe.
I'll check in on my phone.
So, we have, we'll have an hour.
That's her motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and the motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I should say, September fifteenth.
I was just looking on my calendar.
Unless you are meeting on a Sunday, I'm embarrassed.
The peanut counter didn't speak.
Margaret, I can go through and at least give an explanation of the items so that everybody knows what they're looking at. If you go to that chart, the table, on the project needs list. I'm going to identify the items that were not, were not in the capital improvement plan, either O-O-one or enterprise fund. That had been added recently as discussions with staff. And the first one is item one A two, three hundred thousand dollars. That is for valve, water valve replacement that we've come to find out that we've got a major problem there. We're on the table.
Okay.
One A two.
It looks like this.
It's on the sheet right now.
Is this right here, one four nine? Yeah, that's it.
Item one A two, three hundred thousand dollars, that's roughly six thousand dollars to replace fifty, an estimated fifty water valves that aren't working. Item two is the storm sewer pipe, cash basin clean, that's the estimated two million dollars. That will be in the O-O-one account, and this would be a, probably an SRF loan deal, that's new. Item three, flowway cleaning and reconstruction, this estimated fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars. This is the work that Chris had evaluated, this would be the flowway on the west side of I-75. The very east side of I-75 where we have all the debris, the Stony Brook flowway. And the flowway three where it narrows down and is clogged coming out of Gateway going into Pelican Reserve.
One second, sorry to interrupt, but, 'cause I won't remember this. How do I walk this back to, I know you're, you're doing two things, one, you're.
I'm just giving you the ones that worked in the CIP that we approved.
Can we, can we amend this, you know?
Sure.
And send it out, we're just so it's highlighted, or just says, you know, approved or not approved? And then the item description?
That would be done.
Maybe just put the, 'cause I, if you walk through it, I appreciate you wanting the time, but I'm not gonna remember.
But it may be helpful also, is this the actual report itself has the narrative.
It has the narrative.
It does.
And maybe put then also the narrative.
It's like the item description, so here's item description, if you can include that into the table.
What I did with mine is I highlighted it, all the ones that were CIP approved, I just highlighted them, so I can do that.
Yeah. 'Cause I appreciate what you're doing, and it's important, but I'm just not gonna remember it.
Well.
I'm sorry.
I'll just do that, that would save.
'Cause it is important for us to know what's been approved.
Could I ask Mr. Nelson a question about this for a second?
Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
He has all this down for SRF loans and other things, is there any grants available? Could you look into some of these and see if there's any grants available?
We can, what specifically, line item, are we, I mean, I don't have it in.
Could we get you a copy of it?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we can look to see what's available.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, so, Chris, with that in mind, I'm gonna move to supervisor's comment. Mrs. Flaherty. Mr. Kraft. The ADA website compliance and the mass notification, where are we with those two things?
The mass notification Leslie has been working with, so she's moving with that. And the ADA, I emailed him for websites, 'cause you guys wanted to see actual websites. He provided me just pictures, which I had before, they haven't officially launched one yet, so I'm just waiting to hear back from him. We had another phone call today with Streamline, which is, they just partnered with Basdi. But we ended up turning it off halfway through, because it wasn't, they even admitted that they were learning as they were going.
Okay, thank you. And we were only with the Gateway Board rules, do you know if we got with those?
No progress on changing any of those.
Okay, and the criteria manual, I thought, Mr. Tinkle, you were gonna be working on the criteria manual, are you?
When we get to.
Okay, I just wanted an update. And there's some, I know we talked about this last time, about the dumping of, you know, the common pools. However, there's some ruts in that fence area, who's gonna fix those?
I'll fix some of them.
All right, just let it go.
Yes.
Oh, I got a very big problem with puddles in this road leading up to the office, can you see if you can fix some of those again?
Yes, sir.
Other than that, I think you're doing a great job. Too slow, but doing a pretty good one.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I'm good.
Mr. Tinkle?
First one is, for the board, for our discussion. The office building expansion. Where are we at? I, I was at the understanding that we wanted to take and have an analysis of the permanent versus the temporary on this site. Is that, is that our objective at this point in time? 'Cause we need to get this rolling.
I, I thought we were just moving with the temporary.
Or are we just skipping it?
Just the modular.
And just.
What do you call it, temporary or?
We've made the decision that we're not going to do a permanent, we're going with the modular. And the modular is, yeah, thanks.
That was my understanding.
That we're going with a design on a modular on this site?
Yes.
That was my understanding.
Okay.
We'll have on the next agenda, the task authorization for that.
'Cause I thought we were going to do an analysis of permanent versus the modular, because the basis of the difference was our ability to resell the modular. If we can't resell that modular, I would be opposed to doing the modular.
I can tell you from a site planning standpoint, it's gonna be a previous area, so what you actually would end up, if you ended up doing something permanent, you would actually end up doing a design. But it's gonna be a twenty-one hundred and fifty square foot building, I believe, so both still from a site planning standpoint, a permitting standpoint, I don't think it's going to matter whether, at this point, whether.
I wasn't worried about that, I was worried about, can we get the money out of that structure when we sell it in two years to go permanent? Okay.
Wouldn't you like to worry about how soon the area is gonna be available? What are we doing?
Well, that, that certainly, that's, that's an intangible that comes into the analysis. Yeah, because the permit's gonna take some time, and we need to get, we need to get a structure. Should've had it six months ago, anyway. Next one, for Danny, future facility plans, you're gonna get a copy of this deal we just talked about. And there are, in our CIP, currently for water sewer and irrigation, we have several projects that are all eligible, whether they be water facility plan, sewer wastewater facility plan, and/or irrigation facility plan. What do we need to be doing to, and some of those have a twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty-two, I can't remember which one it was, implementation time. So, that means working back, we've got to have a facility plan done and completed to be eligible for the funding. What do you need from us to start the facilities planning process for the CIP work that's on that approved twenty-nineteen budget?
So, the facilities plan is good for five years.
Yes. And can be phased.
It can be phased, and, yeah, so it doesn't, as long as it's within that five-year period, it's good. So, we're working on the facilities plan for the lake banks, for the next phase of the lake banks, which will be for February. The next public meeting, public hearing that DEP will have will likely be in August. They generally have it in January or February, August, sometimes they have one in November.
Can we get you this document, and at that meeting on the fifteenth, you be prepared to indicate the things that are SRF potentially funded? Indicate what the time deals we have to do to get started on a facility plan, to have it completed, to be able to have it implemented by the date that's in the budget?
Yeah, so, that said, I don't see meeting the February date, which means you would be shooting for the August date.
Tell us all that on the distance.
And we can tell it.
Thank you.
Chris, the three hundred and fifty thousand for the storm sewer cleaning, where are we at on determining to be able to start plans and specs on that storm sewer cleaning, the three hundred and fifty thousand allowance? The ponds are starting to go down, today was the first day that they are not overflowing.
We're working on those plans and specs, we have the lists and the footage, it's, it'll be done by the end of the month, plan advertised in November along with the conveyance cleaning on those plants I showed you.
Okay. General comment, rate studies, the rate study, when is the rate study and the connection fee study gonna be delivered to the board?
Rate study has been completed and presented, and we are bringing Darryl back at the second meeting in November to present the connection fee.
He'll be here for the fifteenth?
Right, and at that point, we were gonna talk to the board about moving forward on that ninety-day clock.
Good, 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 that's what I was worried about. I was gonna mention the parts consultant, but Doug has that addressed on getting those guys something in the way of the. What do you call it? Bunchball, bunchball. Next item I got is, I'm seeing and hearing that we got street lighting problems here in Gateway. I haven't heard back from Bentley as to what the problem is down on West Links, but I guess we have a problem in the right-of-way of Gateway Boulevard that really needs to be relaying of wire to, to the lights. Question one is, where do we stand on that, and where's the money coming from to do it? 'Cause you're talking about a lot of money.
Yeah, it's a limited amount right now, 'cause it's a localized repair we're looking at. But when we've gone in and done some repairs, it's very shortly thereafter with the breakages, just moved down a little bit, mostly the oak trees compromising the conduits. So, instead of just making the repair now, we have that issue. We were going in last time, they used the backhoe, this time they're gonna use a boring machine and replacing small sections of it, just putting in new conduit and new wire, because the spot repairs just don't hold. And it's, that street lighting conduit's very much like the irrigation system, it's a little bit compromised, it needs to be replaced in a lot of areas.
Okay. Next item that's got is on, there's been emails going back and forth, and I guess I'm trying to figure out where we stand. We've retained Tetra Tech as our engineer, but yet we're going out and we're getting price proposals from other consultants, and I, I have concern with that. I have a concern with that. I don't know that our consultant giving a price and then having somebody else give an alternate price, that's, to me, that's not kosher. You just don't do that, you don't do that. Next item is, I hate bringing it up, chapter six to our rules. Would like to take and have, again, a workshop or a time reserved for a discussion of chapter six to the rules. This is the infamous internal connectivity rule, we've got some problems. We're not implementing it pursuant to the rule. We've got two assessment categories in Gateway that have been overbilled pursuant to the rule for the last fifteen years. To the tune of about two hundred and fifty thousand by my calculations. We need to set and have a real good discussion of that internal connectivity rule as to how we're going to address that going forward. Because if I read the rule, we are not following it correctly.
We're gonna suggest on the, is that, I'm not sure when Russ is coming back with his initial report, Russ Wire?
He's not gonna address this issue.
This is part of assessment, methodology, and approaches and philosophy.
Unless somebody has told him to look at chapter six, I don't think he has a clue what chapter six says.
So, I guess the discussion might be for the board to have their workshop and discuss that rule, it's called a budget philosophy rule. And to have a workshop and then decide whether the board wants to have revisions to it, or have a consultant look at for further revisions or tweaking or tuning or leaving a rule.
Can we confirm that, have you confirmed that the rate consultant is not?
We haven't told him unless somebody else has done.
No, he hasn't worked on that. It seems to be an appropriate person to discuss it with, because that's what you're looking at, is fair and equitable in that study. And for him to add that roadway and connectivity, I don't think it would be a big reach for him at all.
I mean, if he's doing it, why not?
Would you reach out to him and ask him to do that?
I have no problem.
Yeah, I can send him all the backup too.
I certainly have no problem with getting his interpretation of that, his reading of that rule, a- as it influences our methodology deal. 'Cause right now, we are not in compliance with that rule.
Yeah, I guess, says you.
And I guess, what's that on, Bill?
I said, says you.
What, what's the basis for that?
Because you haven't given this, you haven't given this a doggone thing, sitting here listening to you yak about all of this stuff, even, you don't back up anything you say. We're just supposed to accept at face value whatever you have to say on a particular day.
That would be wise for you if you did that, but, our wood phase three, I will, I will, I'm going to give you the backup. Are you familiar with chapter six rule?
I think so.
And what does that rule say?
Can we?
Basically, the rule says, Margaret, I'm gonna answer his question, I've got the floor. That rule says, on internal connectivity, everybody pays base rates, but not everybody pays specialized rates, but the specialized rates are based upon a benefit of having connectivity to Gateway Boulevard and/or Griffin Drive. That's summarizing what the road says, rule says.
I disagree with that paraphrasing.
But, but.
I'm reading the King's English that you wrote.
We are gonna look into this.
My concern is, Margaret, we've got two other entities in Gateway that do not have connectivity with that rule.
We, we understand.
Once again, I disagree with that being connectivity, that particular road, I would suggest that Mr. Wire, including in scope and services, a global assessment methodology.
And I agree with you.
Not interpretation of this, but whether or not he believes it's, this assessment methodology's appropriate philosophy going forward.
I'll go along with that. As long as Mr. Wire, Mr. Wire.
He's doing a global approach, as I understand it, to everything, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the other one is, we have a couple of items that have not been addressed on the. Then the other one is, we have a couple of items that have not been addressed on the budget that the Pelican Reserve, we've got the flowway, but we are not, Gateway's paying for the entire flowway. Pelican Reserve does not have a component in their budget for their share of the flowway. So, we need to be getting that worked out in the budget. And then likewise, the capital share of the office building, the CIP, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's only delineated to OO1 and the Enterprise, and that's not what chapter six rule says.
We haven't spent a dime on it so far, so you're making a mountain of a molehill.
Yes, yes, we have done. It's in the budget.
We haven't spent a dime on it.
It, it doesn't make a difference. It's in, it's in the budget.
Been in the budget for two years.
And, and, and we're paying for it in Gateway.
We haven't spent a dime on it.
We're paying for it in Gateway in the budget.
You just made a mountain out of one molehill.
If, if it's not a mountain, then you guys could pay your ten percent share, but that, that needs to be addressed because I can't find anything in the budget that says there's an exemption for the office building from specialized services. And I'd like, I'd like to hear from Stephen on that.
Anything else, Mr. Tinkle, I've got it.
No, I said, I'd like to hear from Stephen on that issue.
No, I mean, you're, you're correct. We have not quite gotten that far. So, right now, your budget includes the general fund and the utility fund is sharing it.
It's not in the Pelican Reserve account.
It is not in the Pelican Reserve. We have not gotten that far.
And the reason why it was not allocated to the Pelican Reserve account?
It just, just because we had put it into the budget to get some numbers in there as we started to kind of investigate what the possibilities were gonna be. Once everything gets set, then you can have that discussion in terms of how much of the final numbers will go to Pelican Reserve.
Last one, there's some confusion. In Pelican Reserve, which roads, this is more of a, a knowledge deal for myself and the board. In Pelican Reserve, I was at the understanding that notwithstanding the condominium roads, all the other roads in PP are public roads. I've been told just this last week that's an error, that the only public road is the main road in through the guardhouse, all the way to the bridge, and then from the T intersection out to the Prado cul-de-sac. That's the only public road in Pelican Reserve.
That's not correct. The agreement, maintenance agreement has the map. We've updated it.
Who, who had, who, Phil, do you have that?
Do I have any?
You know what, you know which roads are public?
I have a list also that was attached to the resolution regarding golf carts, because those that are currently owned, which are roads.
Then the information I got was bogus. So, there are more roads.
Streets and roads.
Streets and roads. So, if I go in, for example, if I go in, because it's about the only one I remember, turn left on, what is it, Cypress Grove, and you go down and up and over the hill, and to the left is Solero.
Part of Solero was owned by the district, if you recall it, yes.
That's what I was wondering. And I use that as an example, and I would still know that is a private road. No.
Once again, there's a, there's a, there's a description as well as a map attached to the resolution with regards to golf carts that addresses the District going roads.
Where would I find that?
We have it on the server too. Get your copy.
Get you a copy of that. Sure. That's all I have.
Um, I have one to just...